The meeting of the Erie County Council will come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carol, you have the optional prayer?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let us pray. We need to open our eyes to the needs of our county and we ears to the messages of our residents, our minds to new ideas, open our hearts to use the power we have for the majority, open our lives to our duties, that we may govern the best way possible. We ask to fill us with a desire to do what is right. We ask this in the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Carol. Next is roll call.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mrs. Fatika?
Here.
Dr. Faust?
Here.
Mr. Horton?
Here.
Mrs. Law?
Here.
Mr. Rastader?
Here.
Chairman Leon?
Here.
In the hearing of the public, one person asked for time to be heard, and that'll be five minutes. Mr. Barnes. See, there, we made you the center of attraction tonight.
I told the person, don't start my time, I told the person I sit next to that I can better to see your eyes, I can tell you're paying attention. My name's Randy Barnes, I live in Dr. Faust's district, and as you know, I've been a strong supporter of Northern Pennsylvania Regional College early on. I think it's a great, unique, one-of-a-kind type of situation we have here. I think anyone in Pennsylvania, you go around Pennsylvania, they would die, they would love to have this program we have that is being paid by for the state. I've said many times, make that board down there of the college, make them say no, because I don't, I think you have to present them with proposals and work with those people. Right now, they have early childhood intervention in education, criminal justice, business administration, interdisciplinary studies. It's a beginning, and no one has wanted to promote these people besides me and a few others. But, you know, I heard a lot of arguments about that we have nobody, we don't have enough board members on the board. Does that stop anyone from sending their child to Notre Dame because we don't have anyone from Erie County on the board? This whole thing about board members is kinda bizarre. I heard last, at the last meeting, some woman said we gotta have instructors because when I was in college forty years ago, I broke my leg and my instructor brought me my homework. Well, guess what? We don't get our homework from our instructors, we get our homework via computers now. So, these people that are arguing for bricks and mortar, I think if you look at the generation, it's an older generation. We learn from screens, we learn from these, we learn from... Why should we have this bricks and mortar monstrosity here in Erie? How did the people in Corey get to that? How did the people in Wattsburg get to that? I would much rather have seven locations north of Route 20, stretching from Gerard to Northeast, that I can walk in and get the same training and see the same instructor as that person in Corey. Now, that's innovative. That's something that we can put Erie on the map. We've got a group of counties up here that are gonna work together. We're getting the cart in front of the horse. We're talking about this bricks and mortar, the regional chamber says, "We gotta have bricks and mortar, we gotta have this, 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 and this." Oh, it was last week I heard that nobody wants to go to this college. Most of the kids that are going to this college right now are high school kids that know that, hey, I can get some credits and they don't cost a whole lot. So, let's see what the demand is. I've yet to see a list, if someone in this room has a list of ten or twelve or fifteen bullet points of what our business leaders want, what our manufacturers need, please hand that to me. If we have a bullet point that says, "I need XX and X training, I need XX and X training."
It's in here, right?
Yeah, I've seen that. I wanna see specifics. I'll look at it again, but I haven't seen the specifics where, do I need welding? I don't wanna create another weld school. I don't wanna create another school, a community college, to teach truck driving. Okay? We have those things, but please, don't get so far ahead that we gotta have this monstrosity of bricks and mortar. I'm a graduate of apprentice course, four years. I went to work every day. I went to night school. You know where that night school was? It was in a local high school. Government has a, our poor landlords, I told you this, you build buildings and you use them ten or twelve hours a day. We've got buildings all over the county that we can use for this training. If we're saying our children can't learn from a screen, can't interface on a computer, you know what? They're not much good to employers, because I've yet to go walk into employer that doesn't have a computer screen on somebody's desk, or they're out in the shop doing their manufacturing work and gotta enter things on a computer screen. This thing about having one-on-one, we have one-on-one. There will be people that can talk to these kids or these students. Let's get our heads into the future. Think about Calum, look up Calum Zoo, Michigan, their community college is free, we could do that here. We have a community foundation, we've got the Hurt Hagan, we've got an ECRB, hey, we pay for Perry Wood's education. Why should he be the only one that benefits from ECRB gaming money? You look up Calum Zoo, June 28th, Wall Street Journal, it's free college in Calum Zoo, started in 2005, philanthropists, all anonymous donations, it's free. You know with the graduation, it's made a little difference, not a lot, a little difference. So, show me the demand, and I'll be the first one to stand up and cheer that when that shovel goes in, or you sign the lease for the YMCA building, or whatever you think you might have to do, so we have bricks and mortar, so we can say, "We got bricks and mortar." We don't have the future. We had a chance to have the future, but we don't want the future because we know better, we need bricks and mortar. We want what everybody else has. We don't wanna be different in Erie. Had that LERTA, the mayor said he wants to get maybe ten million dollars of assessment, new assessment, that's a hundred thousand dollars. Go ahead and pass it, it doesn't mean anything. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Anyone else wish to be heard? You have three minutes. Please get up, give your name.
Hello, my name's Art Leopold. Welcome, honorable gentlemen, gentle ladies. Thank you for this special meeting today. I have a couple of items. First of all, I wanna talk about courage and hope. This body was courageous when you did a resolution to hold an Erie business accountable. And now we see where that support has led. It wasn't an easy vote you guys took, it took courage. I wanna thank you for that. It means something in this community when our elected leader stand up and they take a position of courage. And in this situation, I wanna thank each and every one of you, because now we're on a path where the DEP has stepped up, they've done what they've needed, and they're holding the local business accountable, and I do appreciate it. Thank you. Second of all, I wanna talk about LERTA. What we're doing here today, potentially, can affect not just today, tomorrow, but the next ten years, and even more so with the community college. But regarding LERTA, it's important that we not only give some incentive to investors and developers, but that we also look at the people of this community. Now, city council was able to get a little bit of a community investment fund for the city, and that's appreciated. But we're still leaving out some very basic things. How about a local hire? Is there anybody here that would be against preferring or hiring local? Come on. How about a fair wage? I think that's important. All of you, if you're in business, you get a fair wage, you have to. So, let's pay a fair wage to people. And second of all, we have a tremendous difficulty in this community and our minority and disadvantaged population, and we, they need help. It's been a problem for years, and as we look forward to the next ten years, we need to offer them some hope. So, I appreciate you taking a look at some enhancements before you pass LERTA, just, you have a decision to make other than the other bodies, and I think you should take a look at that, and please consider the people of this community. Third of all, the community college. I've read through the Memoranning of Understanding. It's a document full of holes. There's not a lot of substance here. The only thing I get is that you're supposed to be landlords, is that all you wanna do? You wanna be a landlord? They don't wanna give anything regarding substance of guidance. We, they wanna establish an education committee, but the chairman can't even have a vote on their trustee board.
Art, thank you very much, your time is up.
So, please consider. Thank you so much.
My name is Freda Tepfer, I live in, do I, do you need my address?
No, needn't.
I live in Chairman Leon's district. I'm a homeowner, taxpayer, certified orientation and mobility specialist. So, as far as the community college, I am a graduate, not a graduate, but because of community college, I was able to graduate from Cornell University because I transferred there. This community college, this regional college, fails to provide an adequate interface for students needing assistance in managing their student experience. Not just in enrolling and getting loans, but in managing their student experience. In my experience, community colleges offer a whole array of services. It's common in Butler County and all over the state. This is critical to ensuring the success of students. And as constituted, what we've been told, there'll be face-to-face instruction in technical but not academic instruction, and I believe that for the students in the community college, they need the option of having that face-to-face academic instruction. As to the LERTA, the community reinvestment fund that the city established is a joke, and not only that, it steals money, the taxpayer money, that should be going to pay for the application process. They said that it could only be a hundred dollars because that's what it costs to process the application, but yet they're rechanneling it. That's a joke, it's an insult. There should be a process to, similar to the old one but different, that enhances the wages of the people who work in these projects. There should be apprenticeships. I believe that any major project should, in advance, ensure how pedestrian, safe pedestrian access will be maintained throughout the construction process, which often does not happen around here. And lastly, I would like to encourage Vice Chairman Horton, who is liaison to the port, and any of the rest of you involved with the port, to please take a close look at what is being planned at Dobbin's Landing. It's a real crime that we are going to destroy the experience that people can't afford to get to Prescott Isle, we just wanna go and sit and fish. So, please try and intercede in that process. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Pat Long from Waterford Township. Three, three or four years ago, John Elliott came to this council. John was a man that talked, 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 and he made promises, promises, promises. And this county council made a very bad decision to lend him three million dollars of cold cash from reserve funds. Unfortunately, it was all talk, and nothing that he promised came true. And this council lost three million dollars and then voted for a tax increase on the public, on the rest of the county. Today, we have a mayor that's talk, 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 promises, promises, promises. And he's asking you to give up your county taxes for ten years in a LERTA. A LERTA that's based on fraud and doesn't meet the LERTA law. The only thing that's going to happen here if you pass this LERTA is that the county is going to lose a lot of revenue, possibly more than what you lost to John Elliott, because it's over a long period of time and it covers a lot of projects. So, I'm asking the county to vote this down. It doesn't meet the terms of the local economic tax law passed by the state legislature. If you wanna give a tax break to county residents, if you really think that spurs, then give a tax break on all new construction over the whole county. Don't just give it to the one-third of the county residents in the city, give it to everyone in the county. And if all these arguments about tax breaks are true, that it spurs economic development, then it'll spur economic development in the whole county and not just in this city. And believe me, Corey and Union City and Waterford Northeast and Gerard, they need it just as much as the city. And you can do it. All one of you has to do is make a motion that you give a tax break to all new construction or remodeling in the county. You can do it, you don't need a law, special law, to do it, and that's what I urge you to do. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Once, twice, third, and last time? Thank you very much. We'll go on to the reports of county officials, county executive, and our designated.
Just a couple of brief comments, Mr. Chairman. With all due respect, the document that was submitted by the administration, we do believe that is a transitional document, we believe that it's complete in form. We'd just like to restate that there is a lot of work to be done here, this is just a first step, and certainly it's going to be an involved enough process that we will have to work on it in a step-by-step kind of transition. But, as I said, that document was something that took a lot of work and a lot of negotiation with the regional college, and we feel it's complete as it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing as we didn't really have a finance or personnel committee, but I'll ask Mr. Anderson to speak on finance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On behalf of the finance committee, we have no report today.
Thank you. Also, Personnel Committee, Mrs. Fatika?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There will be no report regarding personnel today. Thank you.
Okay, under other, I have one council member, Andre.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, obviously, I'm gonna talk about the community college. I think what, really what we have here is Harrisburg politics blocking our Erie Community College with someone from the other end of the state who, by the way, his community has a brick-and-mortar community college, and they receive hundreds of millions of dollars over time for having that brick-and-mortar college. So, while nine of Pennsylvania's largest cities continue to drink at the state budget trial and pump millions of dollars into their local economies from the community college budget, Erie, the fourth-largest city, is once again being left out by Harrisburg. Rather than fight against Erie's inequitable treatment, our local leaders are telling us to bow down and accept what we can get. Local leaders now say they want us to withdraw our groundbreaking application for a community college and instead, enter into a half-baked, or transitional, but half-baked nonetheless, state-run, remote-access vanity project of the Republican leader of the Senate, Joseph Scarnati, whose own district is served by a real community college. At home, my father, who fought his whole life to make this a better place for everybody, would have a word for this situation. It's a word I cannot repeat, but it's a regular bovine activity. And he would most certainly ask, "Where the hell is our Democratic governor, who we all supported? Where's he at when we need him?" The governor in countless conversations with our leaders has said many times, "I am for a community college for Erie." That's why politicians or elected officials get a bad name, they say we talk out both sides of our neck. Because we know if he really believed that Erie deserved and needed a community college, then why didn't he add Erie to his budget as the fifteenth community college? If he's a so-called workforce empowerment champion, why did he not lift up Erie? Erie, this Erie, a manufacturing powerhouse that helped build this state. The vision of a community rising up to claim its future under the mantra of Erie refocused will be shattered if we allow Harrisburg to strip us of our most powerful tool to compete in the high-tech future and create social, economic mobility for our citizens. Take a look at the numbers. In a recent budget, he has given the fourteen community colleges, colleges, the top nine cities in Pennsylvania, but not number four Erie, two-hundred-and-forty-four million dollars in operating costs, and forty-nine million dollars in a capital budget. That's close to one-third of a billion dollars. Since we started our community college effort in 2007, Harrisburg has given the nine largest cities of PA, but not number four Erie, a total of two-point-four billion dollars, with each college getting upwards of two-hundred-million dollars for their community college. These are economic development dollars. Where are our legislators? Where is Ryan Bizar? Where is Bob Merzke? Where is Pat Harkins? Because we need them to explain why Senator Scarnati wants to give us two million dollars, and the governor wants to give us five million dollars, and the other cities are getting twenty million dollars every year, while we pay our taxes and get zero return on the investment. And I would read this again, because every year, you know, he wanted to know, someone asks, "What did the industrial captains, captains of industry and manufacturing think?" Well, we surveyed that, we happen to have all of that. We did our due diligence, and it got to this one point, it said, "Learning approaches that help students be successful." Because we have started out with eleven objectives, I need to tell you, the fixed-brick-and-mortar version hit nine of them, I need to tell you that the NPRC version hit two of them. I need to tell you that we leveled it down to seven, and then we quickly whittled it down to three. In the distance-learning model, it was, it made the seven cut, it made the three cut, but it wasn't what we asked for. It said that distance-learning can be attractive and important options for areas of the country that lack access to brick-and-mortar or post-secondary options. However, this option is available to those with computers and access to the Internet or in isolated classrooms. And so, it's ironic that once again, on this day, we wanna feed the wealthy again. We wanna feed them through the community college, and we wanna feed them through LERTA. It says, and on that point, I believe Erie School District kids, children are still reading out of old tattered textbooks, and they're making copies to go home and do homework. But we're gonna bring them into the, they're under financial watch currently, and they're gonna give you LERTA money away, but that's another subject. Research shows that the distance and online learning is not the best option for the kinds of students that typically enroll in community colleges. Columbia University's Community College Research Center found that students with lower incomes and weaker academic preparation perform more poorly in distance and online learning courses than did similar students enrolled in face-to-face courses. In addition, we know that community college students require a level of advising and guidance that is not possible via distance learning. For example, a rigorously researched model of college advising that has a strong positive impact on community college student retention and graduation, you might skim over that if you didn't catch that, but retention and graduation. Because whether you go to Edinburgh, Gannon, Mercyhurst, Baron, Fortis, any of the other tech schools with the thirty-thousand, fifteen-thousand-dollar-year tuitions, and it says, what does it say? Retention and graduation. So, you go a year or two, and you come out with thirty thousand or sixty thousand dollar Your old money is your parents owe on their house. It says, it says that that doesn't, it must, community college has a direct effect on that. It said it includes face-to-face advising and is designed to create strong relationships between students and advisors. This intrusive model, known as integrated planning and advising for student success, has been adopted as one part of a large-scale reform act. Community colleges all over the country try and give it away for free. Ain't nothing free. And they say, "Okay, the taxpayer don't, he don't wanna pay taxes for it." One thing I found out over the last ten years about the community college discussion, we've muddled it up so much that the community is confused. Hell, even educators are confused. But the one thing that nobody is confused about is the economic development impact that it would have. And if we enter into this agreement, we're gonna siphon off all our money to Warren. First of all, it's not going to, it will not succeed, and also, under this MOU, as it currently is, it would, and the discussion that we had, that I was privy to, out of this agreement, we would receive Perico College, which is already a failure. It's on the bus route, it's already a failure. And so, what you'll have is the other six or eight sites that NPRC has sprinkled throughout the county, you'll only have, you'll only be allowed to operate out of that one building, which they will rent space on a case-by-case basis, not lease the whole building, only when they're using the building. That means, that means that first two-year thing they're talking about, retention and graduation, getting a return, when our kids flunk out, they're gonna flunk out with that bill too. And, and, it costs more than a brick-and-mortar community college. It's a farce, and we should be ashamed of ourselves. And I will be voting against it, I will be asking also that we put forth our application. We fought hard for this application. We spent taxpayer dollars for this application. Why wouldn't we, why wouldn't we demand that Harrisburg voted up or voted down? Don't let the governor off the hook. And whatever you do, make them do it in the, make it do, don't let them do it undercover of darkness. It hasn't been a transparent process, yet we have the MOU in its incomplete transitional form that says absolutely nothing, except that you don't have a right to exist, and we'll make all the decisions. Doesn't say we get to decide anything. It says we get to make recommendations. I thought I seen, well, I thought I seen her come in here, because I, yeah, I did, because I got a messenger, I got a message for the governor, Julie, I think the last time we were on East 11th Street, I delivered it myself. I know that this is his, he doesn't have to run again, but I guarantee you, I was in a room and a state senator, he always a threat. You were in that room, he said that this decision that you make will affect your political career. There was only one, two, three, four, five of us in the room. He wasn't talking to Fiora or Carol, because they're leaving anyway. He wasn't talking to me, because he ain't got the date. And I took umbrage that he was saying that to my colleague. Harrisburg should not be allowed to pontificate and tell us what to do and how to do our economic development, and if they do wanna be involved in it, tell them to give some community benefit agreements when we're giving away all our RACP money too, because we don't get any ROI on that either. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Horton. Any others? If not, let's go on to old business. Let's have second reading in title only of the ordinance 37.
A second reading of ordinance number 37, 2019, approval of agreement between the county of Erie and clerical and professional units of Ask Me Local 2666.
So moved.
Second.
By Mr. Horton, seconded by Mr. Anderson. Comment?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just wanna make a quick comment. In the midst of the other business that we have before us today, I'm afraid that the work that has been done on this agreement is going to be lost. work that has been done on this agreement is going to be lost and that should not happen. I want to commend all of the people in the administration and that worked for the county who have worked on this. I applaud those that are the stewards and representatives of the unions that have worked on this. And I want to especially commend the employees who have voted on this. This agreement brings some equity for our employees, yet it's fair and it doesn't try and grab too much, so it's also fair to the taxpayers of our community as well. I think that should be mentioned because of, as I said, because of the other business and I don't want this good work to be overlooked. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Any other comments? Go ahead, Andre.
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, this is also a resolution that I'm very, very excited to support, coming off the implementation of our new pay scale plan. It's been rather rocky, to be kind. We did that first portion with the non-bargaining, the non-bargaining employees. And I think it's right and fitting that we included ASME along with it. And I do commend the administration for doing the right thing in allowing the ASME leadership to walk down this path where the working men and women, particularly those ASME workers in Erie County who have been underpaid for so long, to bring them at least a little bit of equity to other workers in the county. So I will be supporting this also.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. As a former ASME member and currently a retired ASME, I can appreciate the hard work that was involved and I commend you, if I'm not mistaken, this is the first contract, so congratulations. Thank you so much for all of your time and hard work.
Others? If not, roll call.
An ordinance 37, Mr. Anderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika.
Yes.
Dr. Faust.
Yes.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Mrs. Law.
Yes.
Mr. Rastatter.
Yes.
Chairman Leon.
Yes.
Next, under new business, resolution number?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Anderson.
I'd like to ask to amend the agenda.
Okay. All right. Let's do that under new business.
I'd like to ask, under new business, item B, that we amended to include exhibit B, the way we have presented it on, just so the public knows, the way it's been presented, the city's LERTA ordinance was already included, so the school district voted on theirs yesterday, so I'm asking that we include that as exhibit B and then move this to a second reading. And then also, to include item F, Dr. Faust's appointment of Kelly Hess to the Erie County Gaming Revenue Authority Board. That would be the conclusion of my asking for amending.
Okay, it's been moved to second to make a second reading of ordinance 38, along with putting on exhibit B, the school district's proposal for the LERTA ordinance, along with putting on Kelly Hess as the appointment for Dr. Faust in the ECR. Any comments on that? If not, roll call vote on the motion.
Mrs. Fatika.
Yes.
Dr. Faust.
Yes.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Mrs. Law.
Yes.
Mr. Rastatter.
Yes.
Mr. Anderson.
Yes.
Chairman Leon.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Law.
I'd like to make a motion to table our resolution 23.
I second.
Moved by Carol Law, seconded by Mr. Anderson to table. Roll call on the table, Mr. Clerk.
Tabling resolution 23, Dr. Faust.
I will explain this vote when we're done. Yes.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Mrs. Law.
Yes.
Mr. Rastatter.
Yes.
Mr. Anderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika.
Yes, and Mr. Chairman, I will explain my vote when we're done.
Chairman Leon.
Yes.
Okay, I'll give everybody a chance to explain their vote if they want to. Go ahead, Tom.
Mr. Chairman, just very quickly, you know, when you, if you are on the losing side of a tabling motion, it's not your prerogative to bring it back at any particular point. And so I voted, I assumed it was going to pass, so I voted with a majority. So at the appropriate time, if I feel it could be brought back, I will do so. Thank you.
Okay. Kathy?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. While I am in agreement that Harrisburg politics have been excluding Erie County from becoming the 15th Community College, while residents in this county have been paying tax dollars to support the state's other 14 community colleges. And I believe this is unfair and I don't want to risk ending up with nothing. So to make sure that we can have the time to address this, that is the reason I voted yes to the table.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Anderson.
I just want to mention that I'm appalled that people think that they can shove an important issue like this down the throats of council. We are here to represent the districts in which we live and the citizens of Erie County. There is no question that I am for a community college. There is no question, I believe, that we need to make compromise and changes. And there's no question that I believe that we can get there. But I strongly believe we are not there yet. I've asked over and over again that we wait on this, that the work is not done, that unfortunately, there is so much misinformation out in the community that everybody is confused, even elected officials and the people who are trying to move this forward. I applaud my colleagues for recognizing that today and recognizing that, one, there is still work left to do and that, two, this issue is important enough to continue doing that work because we feel that we can get someplace and accomplish what we need to accomplish for our community. So I want to thank my colleagues this morning for continuing to have that vision and hope that we can have better things in Erie County because we deserve better things in Erie County and we can be patient enough to wait to make sure that it's the right thing for Erie County. Thank you.
Anyone else? If not, let's go on to the next one, which will be a second reading of ordinance 38 in title only.
Second reading of ordinance number 38, 2019, approving revised LERTA programs in the city of Erie and the Erie School District.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Mr. Anderson, seconded by Dr. Faust. Any comments? Go ahead.
Mr. Chair. I move to amend ordinance number 38, to amend section 381.02 subsection B. And I'll read it out loud to the public. Section 381.02 sub-paragraph B. Provided to be eligible for the tax exemption provided here under, the applicant, property owner, developer of any improvement or new construction which exceeds the sum of $750,000 shall agree to negotiate in good faith with an organized coalition of community leaders in the city of Erie to implement a reasonable community benefit agreement intended to encourage community support for the project and to ensure the project's contributions to the community, including, without limitation, hiring, wages, mixed-income housing, and other economic activity from and within the vicinity of the project. And the reason I'm asking for this language to be put in there, obviously, is that my opening statement this evening was, when do the poor people get something? And so I'm asking for this to be amended.
Have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second for the amendment? Do I have a second? If not, the amendment fails. Roll call on the?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, just before we vote, if I could. I'm going to vote in favor of this. Just a couple of things. Mr. Long mentioned that we gave money to Mr. Elliott. We approved that money long before, Sean. I'm sorry. What's that? I'm not speaking into it? Sorry. We approved that money long before and I'll be the first to admit that things did not work out as we had wished. We took a chance on the Erie County Redevelopment Authority doing something that exploded badly in our face and I don't think we'll ever do that particular type of project again. I think when it comes to LERTA, a lot of us have in mind Bush Industries. That's an example of how LERTA should not be used. It was targeted toward one business to get them to come to town and they escaped after 10 years. This is a project that will affect the whole city. It's important to keep in mind that it only relieves the tax burden on the new construction. If there is no, if you don't have any new construction, you're not going to have any worries about losing any particular money. And it affects the poorest of the citizens of this city and the most expensive. It includes, everybody is included in it. So if somebody of minimal means improves their house with a new porch or a garage or their driveway, that assessment will kick in until 10 years down the road, but they'll be able to do that and make that project that much more affordable during that 10 years. And if passed as prologue, there was a building boom in the city of Erie when the Philippi administration passed the same type of program however many years ago. And I think you're going to see the same in this particular instance and that's why I am supporting it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any others?
Yeah, Mr. Chair. I won't be voting. I'll be voting against this ordinance this evening. I think it's inequitable. I think that if a poor resident in one of our poorer census tracts were to add a new porch or even a garage, I don't think the value of their home's going to go up very much because of the neighborhoods. With all the gentrification going on and the money market-based housing, I see poor people, not just African-Americans, but poor people, won't be able to afford in the city. We don't have rent control like Atlantic City. In five years, you won't recognize this. Maybe in five years, the 16501 zip code won't be the poorest in the Commonwealth. Maybe in five years from now, school district or city, city of Erie kids won't be in financial distress. But to give it away, and I'm not against LERTA in its entirety. I have stated publicly, time and time again, my biggest issue with LERTA is north of the Bayfront Highway, because I don't see anything blighted over there. What I see north of the Bayfront Highway is that it's been balkanized by the authorities. I see the Port Authority. I see the Water Authority. I see the Erie Events or Convention Center Authority, who doesn't pay a dime of taxes or a pallet, yet they own Warner Theater, Jerry Uck Park. They own the Erie Insurance Arena, the Convention Center itself, two hotels. And the state hung that millstone around our neck like they always do with the unfunded mandates. They don't pay zero taxes and this LERTA is going to allow them to, without any community benefit agreement, it's going to allow them to a 10-year tax-exempt status on a projected $600 million project on our most prime real estate. And I need to say that I'm very, very interested in seeing that developed because it's part of the second legislative district, but it's also down the hill from where I grew up, grew up at the foot of Sasa Fras. I think we've already co-signed loans. We built the infrastructure. I have looked at the plan, Ms. Tepfer, and I agree with you that Ferris wheel just won't do it in 20-degree weather while the snow is blowing off the Dobbin's Landing, which is really the Erie Public Dock. So I will be voting against this because there's nothing in it for poor people or the citizens of Erie.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, you know, I want to chime in a little bit. This is for information for Mr. Long. You indicated, you know, that the county has to propose a LERTA program for all of the county of Erie. We can't do that. We can't infringe on the legislative action of municipalities, boroughs, or townships. And obviously, each of us are from different areas in here, so we have no right to say we're going to start a LERTA program throughout the county. We don't have that. If somebody wants to start a LERTA program, for example, you're from Waterford, if they want to start a LERTA program, it has to start with your supervisors or whoever's out there that run Waterford. And also, the $3 million you were talking about, I hate to bring this up, but I didn't vote for that $3 million, by the way, just to let everybody know, so that they know that I was the one that didn't vote for. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman.
I know that.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Just quickly, regards to, you know, the LERTA needs of Waterford or Corey or Fairview or whoever, I don't ever remember us denying a LERTA request. So if the local community wants one and the school district wants one, I think you're going to find this council will be supportive. So start there, where they all start.
That was my point.
Right. I just wanted to.
Yes.
I sent out letters to all the municipalities and boroughs and townships, giving them the option to have LERTA and that I would take advantage of it and kind of dispelling them this, like the Bush Industries fiasco. And I got no response from any of them. So I guess none of them really want LERTA.
Okay. Good enough. Thank you. Okay, let's have a roll call on ordinance 38, the second reading approving the revised LERTA program.
Mr. Horton?
No.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastatter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Anderson.
I just want to make a couple of brief comments now that we've passed the LERTA. And I could keep everybody here all morning with the comments that I could make, but I won't do that. I've been involved in the process of the LERTA program on behalf of this county since it started, along with several of my colleagues, and have been to every meeting except one. And I am astounded at the misinformation, the lack of people understanding and interpreting this whole process and the potential outcome. Other communities around the state can bring this program forward and the community gets behind it and supports it because they understand it. Our community somehow convolutes it into something completely different than what the intention is and frankly, doesn't even understand, and I'm talking all the way to elected officials, doesn't even understand what the LERTA program is all about. But I sat at a city council caucus meeting where the consultant that the city hired showed the city, this wasn't even about the LERTA, they were giving them an overview of the economic position of the city and in that specifically showed detailed information and data about how LERTAs positively affect a community. And a member of council sat there and argued with that. And a member of council sat there and argued with that, that not enough data is presented, and we have no data to move this forward. Yet, over and over again, the data was shown, and it's just, it's just mind-boggling that the process that we had to go through, that it took over 18 months for us to get to this point. I think what we will all find is that this is a positive, will have a positive outcome. The one thing that I will say that has to be corrected in the community is, LERTA is not a tax break. LERTA is a program put forth by the state legislature to take property that is not achieving its maximum assessment potential and giving a deferment in taxes to allow for that property to achieve its potential maximum assessment level that the county has assessed that property at. That is the essence of a LERTA program, and that's what a LERTA program tries to infuse in a community at its core. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Horton?
Yes. That's a good synopsis by my colleague. He left out very important verbiage, though in that LERTA, it's a program that's supposed to be dealing with blight, and there's nothing blighted north of the Bayfront Highway. There's not a doggone thing blighted north of the Bayfront Highway. And I think, because people are confused, and many people don't understand it, including some elected officials, I think that distinction clearly has to be made. It's for blighted properties.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I respectfully, just want to make one more comment with my colleague, that yes, and I completely respect Councilman Horton's position, but it's not only about blight, it's about a deteriorating area. And if we look across the state and across the country, the assessment values of not only Erie, but all of Erie County are deteriorating in relationship to the way in which other communities' assessments are increasing. And so, the argument is that this, we can argue the different areas of the city, but the entire city itself is in a deteriorated area. Yes, we need to focus on those areas of blight. I completely concur with my colleague, but it is, it's a larger program than that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Without exemption, except exemption, move to approve the following appointments. Michael Morton, Michael Martin, good lord, to the Erie County Human Relations Commission. That's your appointment, Mr. Leon. The appointment of John Steiner to the Erie County Human Relations Commission. That's Mr. Anderson's appointment. The appointment of Greg Orlando, the Erie County Human Relations Commission Advisory Board. That's Mr. Leon's appointment. And Kelly Hess to the ECRB. That's my appointment.
Have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastatter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Yes. Go ahead. Andre, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I've asked my colleagues to add Resolution Number 24, 2019, urging the State Board of Education to issue a decision on Erie County's application to establish a community college. That resolution reads, and I apologize for not having it on the board or anything for you, but it reads, "Whereas, on May 25, 2017, the State Department of Education and the Pennsylvania Legislature officially established the Northern Pennsylvania Regional College, here and after NPRC, as an alternative educational opportunity committed to providing online, video-accessible instruction to nine rural counties, including Erie County. And whereas, on June 27, 2017, Erie County Council, on behalf of the Erie community, its youth, its workforce, its captains of industry, adopted Resolution Number 27 of 2017, directing the county executive to submit and process Erie County's application for a freestanding community college to be named the Community College of Erie County. And whereas, the community college application submitted by Erie County to the Board of Education has stalled, coincident with the pressure exerted by NPRC on Erie County to abandon its application to establish a community college in favor of the NPRC's rural-oriented educational platform. Now therefore, be it resolved by the County Council of the County of Erie that Erie County does hereby postpone any partnership agreement with the NPRC until after the State Board of Education has issued a decision on Erie County's application for a community college, and does hereby urge the State Board of Education to issue a decision on the merits of the county's application at its next scheduled meeting or within six months of the date of this resolution."
We have a motion on floor. Do I have a second to that motion? I have a second? If not, that fails too.
Great. Mr. Chairman, move.
Yes, before we adjourn, we're going to hold an executive session. The only person I want to see in here is Tom Tellarico and Doug. All members of council will stay.
Stand adjourned.
Stand in adjourn.